Hello, good evening. I'm Shanna Cox, Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board. I welcome all here this evening and call this meeting to order officially. We have an excused absence from Lucy Bisson, so Amy Smith's gonna do the roll call for me this afternoon.
Roger Dupree?
Yeah.
Michael Markcott?
Present.
Mark Roy?
Here.
Shanna Cox?
Here.
Alex Pine?
Here.
Sophia Burns?
Here.
Amy Smith? Here. Thank you. Please let it reflect that we also have our city staff with us today. That includes Shelley Norton, our Deputy Director, Jonathan Connor, our Director, Craig Tebow, our Land Use Planner, Alinda Tripp, our Administrative Assistant. And let the record also reflect that Zoe Lidstrom is also here. And I believe we need to bring in one of our associate board members. Do you have a record of who our last associate board member was? Was it Zoe that was included last time? Rock, paper, scissors? Should we decide it that way?
Yeah.
Do our notes reflect who it was last time?
Okay, Zoe. It's Zoe's turn.
It is Zoe's turn?
Yeah.
Way to win that battle. Great. Then, for the purposes of this evening, Zoe will be a voting member of the planning board. I'll make a quick note that the planning board is comprised of seven appointed members. An quorum is necessary when we have it. Agendas for this meeting are available in the wall container at the entrance to this room, should anyone in attendance not have a copy. And it consists of the following agendas, which I will read briefly before we dig into them all. Adjustments to the agenda, correspondence, public hearings, and then other business. And finishing with reading of the minutes and adjournments. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Is there any correspondence?
No.
Making it easy. Our agenda also reflects that we have no public hearings this evening. So we'll begin at other business. And our first item is Michael Arata has submitted a Shoreland zoning permit application for the replacement of an existing residence at 3 Lune Drive. And I believe Shelley, you're gonna bring us up to speed.
Yes. So, I believe this is the first time the board has had a Shoreland zoning permit that's come before you. The reason that this one is before you is that it's a complete tear down and rebuild, and they're within the 100-foot setback from the lake. So, under the Shoreland zoning ordinance, that requires planning board approval instead of code enforcement. That's what the state has interpreted the ordinance to mean. So, that's why we're before you this evening. The project, I can try to just summarize briefly. The project is on a parcel that's .19 acres. It's developed with lawn, with a driveway, walkways, a shed, and an existing home. The intent is to demolish the shed and the house, remove the walkways, and to replace the house with an elevated modular home that would get the building out of the floodplain. So it's being raised a couple of feet up. It would also be expanded a little bit in the footprint. And there would be a new staircase built that would give access to the driveway. There are two shrubs on site that would need to be replaced, but otherwise, since it's all lawn, they would just need to re-vegetate in kind. Because this project is in the Shoreland Zone, in the Non-Nim Pond Overlay, and in the floodplain, there's a number of things that staff and applicant have worked through with their application to make sure everything meets all those elements of the code, which we believe that it does. Impervious surfaces are allowed in the RA to be 20% maximum. That is what they're planning to put back, is 20%. Right now, it's about 19%. There are a number of elements that they're working very hard to be in conformance with that I could go through if you want me to, as far as height restrictions, footprint restrictions, the amount of expansion they're allowed, and so forth. But I'll just hit the highlights here and say that the ordinance does require that the expansion be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So I have that as a recommendation for condition of approval. Because of the way the ordinance is written, because it's within the 100 feet of the lake, the only way they can locate within the 100 feet is for the board to make a finding, that they have set it back as far as maximumly practicable for their lot conditions. Staff is suggesting that that is the case, and that we recommend you make that finding. You can see in the map that's on the wall here, their proposal is to be set back about 46 feet from the lake. Right now, it's about 44 feet. They're planning to keep the 19-foot setback from Lune Drive, which is less than what's required, but it's the current non-conforming situation. It's required to be 25 feet. So because they're hemmed in on both sides, and the lot is the size of it is, they can't possibly meet either the setback from the lake or from the road. Or without, if they were to meet it for the road, they'd be going closer to the lake. So we believe that they've done their best to meet the intent of the ordinance. So we recommend that you make a positive finding on that element. And then, one other condition of approval would be, it's a little unusual, but this particular development that they're within has a city septic system, if you will, that 11 houses or 12 houses, I don't recall, share. So, they're proposing to replace their septic tank, which is where the solids go, but the rest of that liquid effluent gets pumped a half a mile away to the city system. So we just wanna make sure that there is provision when the plumbing inspector is reviewing things, that also engineering would look at it and make sure that they aren't increasing the necessary capacity to make sure the system has capacity. So those are the main points that staff wanted to point out. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain further questions. But under actions necessary, it would be to make a finding that the application is complete. That's kind of language from the Shoreland zoning ordinance. Then make a finding that they've set back to the greatest practicable extent. And then make a finding on actual approval or denial of the permit itself.
Thank you. May I assume the applicant's in the room this evening? Welcome. Was there, I know that it's not a public hearing, was there any anticipation of the applicant making a statement tonight? I don't wanna put them on the spot either.
I think the board could go either way, if you'd like them to. They could probably provide a presentation, but they don't have like a formal presentation.
Great. Then I'd prefer it if the board had any discussion, and then if we had any clarifying questions, we could invite you up, unless there was something you wanted to begin with. Okay, great. Then I'll open it up to the board. Any clarifying questions or discussion? Great. Any contributions that the applicant would like to make? Okay. Excellent. Then I'd be looking for a motion.
Yes, please.
Make a motion? Make a finding that the applicant, let me start over. I make a finding that the application submitted by Michael Arata for a Shoreland Zone permit for 3 Lune Drive is a complete application pursuant to Article 12, Section 10.
Do I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. But for the next two, do I need a second? And shall we vote on each one individually?
Yeah, I would do that.
Great. Thank you. Then please note that we have a second. Any further discussion on the first finding? Can we call the roll? Yeah, all night, sorry. Thanks for subbing in. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markcott?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith? Yes. Alex Pine?
Yes.
Zoe Lidstrom?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to make the second finding too, Mr. Markcott?
Sure. Make a finding that the application submitted by Michael Arata for a Shoreland Zone permit for 3 Lune Drive for the relocation of an existing house within 100 feet of the pond meets the greatest practicable extent pursuant to Article 12, Section 2, Subsection C3, relocation.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roger? Let me call the roll. You're welcome to use first names going forward if you'd like. Roger?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Shanna?
Yes.
Amy? Yes. Alex?
Yes.
Zoe?
Yes.
Gonna round it out and make it a triple, sir?
Sure. I make a motion, that's the easier one. Motion as opposed to finding. I make a motion that the application submitted by Michael Arata for a Shoreland Zone permit for 3 Lune Drive meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 12, Section 2, Shoreland Area Standards, and that approval be granted with the following conditions. Those are conditions up above, right? Staff recommendation?
Yep.
Number one, that the expansion of the non-conforming house be recorded at the Registry of Deeds within 90 days of approval of this Shoreland Zone permit, and that proof be provided to the City of said filing prior to the issuance of a building permit. Two, that any increased wastewater needs of the new house be reviewed by Public Works and the plumbing inspector to ensure that the existing city system has capacity. Three, that all other requirements of the Shoreland Area Ordinance be met by the applicant at the time of a building permit.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roger? Amy, will you call the roll? Roger?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Shanna?
Yes.
Amy? Yes. Alex?
Yes.
Zoe?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. May your building process go well and smoothly. Great. Our next item under other business is the planning board initiating changes to the Zoning and Land Use Code, Appendix A, Article 5, for the use of a temporary dwelling unit consideration. I believe that our conversation has started with Shelley this evening.
Craig's gonna start you off instead.
Craig, you gotta get credit on the memo then. Craig, thank you.
Article 5, Section 3E, the zoning land use code that does discuss temporary housing. Currently, the ordinance says it's written only allows for the placement of temporary housing when there is the reconstruction of a sort of damaged single-family or two-family home. We've had requests in the past, and we've had discussions about this, about whether to allow temporary housing when there is new construction on a vacant lot of a single-family or two-family home. That's the main change that we're looking at. And we have a few discussion questions as well regarding the existing ordinance. So, looking at discussion comments, one, and, oh, I'll take them one at a time. The ordinance only allows temporary housing where owner-occupied, single-family detached, or two-family structure was damaged or destroyed. Staff has been asked about living on-site while constructing a new home when there wasn't one before. Staff recommends the board consider allowing temporary living on-site during the construction of an owner-occupied, new, single-family detached or two-family home. The second discussion comment. The current ordinance allows for temporary housing to be established for 90 days, plus two 90-day extensions, for a total of up to 270 days. Staff recommends aligning this timeline to our building permits and also increasing the time to allow for new construction and more time for reconstruction. And that would, with our building permits, are typically on six-month durations. That's it.
I think you have a third discussion item on the back.
Oh, it's hiding from me. Okay, number three. The current ordinance provides standards for the placement of temporary housing and appears to allow this in all zoning districts. Is the board interested in making any changes to this to restrict where temporary housing related to new construction can be located?
Thanks.
That's it.
Well done. Anything that any of you wanted to add to that?
I just wanted to express the impetus behind a lot of this is, as you guys can imagine, we've seen a lot of folks that are buying vacant land, and they sell everything they have except for a travel trailer or a motorhome. And they wanna live in that while they build their property. A lot of the surrounding communities have such an ordinance. Ours is more restrictive, so staff has brought this up and discussed it and thought it would be a good idea for the board to take up and try to amend our ordinances to allow folks to stay on their own land, provided certain conditions are met while they are building their property.
Yeah. And the time for the discussion couldn't be better, 'cause our inventory's never been tighter. That's appreciated. I'm gonna label these three discussion comments in buckets of new versus rebuild, which feels like the first discussion item, 'cause the rest is moot. And then timeframe, and then location. So, shall we begin? Any thoughts on the desire to expand this ordinance to include new housing on vacant lots? Roger?
I have a question regarding the positioning of the temporary house. Is there any conditions prior to the building of the house itself? In other words, somebody buys a piece of land, and they put a trailer on it, and they say, "All right, I'm gonna build a house." And then, you know, 16, 90, 120 days down the line, they finally start doing something.
I believe some of the ordinances that we're looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, but, you know, it's a permit. So it's a temporary dwelling permit that they're getting, and it has to coincide and be attached with some sort of building permit. So when they come in, that'll tell us that they have plans to actually build something, and they're not just living on the land in their trailer, you know, infinity. So it is tied to something.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Markcott?
What I think Roger might have been referring to, 'cause he triggered a thought here, is if somebody says he wants to build a home there, and puts a trailer on there. But I know that we've got this in code, and I'm not gonna do it justice, but where construction must start within so many days of moving in such as that. And so, if he has 90 days under the current with two possible extensions, and if that gets increased to the higher number, then nothing happens in the first 120 days. I think that's what Roger wants to prevent. So, is there some sort of condition that can be put in, in front of the living in the trailer?
I think any condition, that's part of this discussion.
Well, so I think the second discussion item is allowing us to better align the current, which is 90 days with two 90-day extensions, to linking it to that permit process, which is, once a building permit for a house is given, it requires work to start in six months. And so we could tie it to both the date of the permit being issued, the date of work starting, the end of the first six months, and then revisions or extensions based on that. And right now, those two are kind of handled very differently, but yes.
Well, after having gone through this this weekend, and first instinct was, heck, no. Especially on new building. Understand when something's damaged, you've been inconvenienced by an unfortunate event. But if you take advantage of this, and you don't need to start until some point within the first 90 days, or first extension, second extension. And if we're talking about the potential of this being used in a new plot of land where multiple houses are going up at the same time, I can see a shanty town coming. I would wanna see something in the effect that the minute you put that trailer on there and start living in it, the process of building that new home, or damaged home even, has to start immediately, not sometime 1 to 90 days in.
Or even further.
Understand, but the temporary dwelling permit also has a timeline. So whether they, if they get the temporary dwelling permit on day one, and the building permit on day one, but they don't start building until day 90, the days are still ticking for the permit in the temporary dwelling. So when that time is up, whether their house is built or not, they're technically supposed to, they're now out of code, unless they get their extension, they're gonna have to remove the temporary dwelling. So it still has a timeline on it, on the temporary dwelling.
That may be, but there are two potential, currently two potential 90-day extensions. With the suggestion of making that number 180, 360, 540, you're talking about an entire year plus, and you're going through all four seasons, and then some. I'd wanna see some guarantee that construction's happening immediately. Let's not take advantage, if at all possible, of extensions. Get the thing going. I don't wanna see people living in a trailer on a piece of property with the hopes that they're gonna start 90 days from now, or 180 days from now, and then it just becomes a problem. Then there becomes a code problem, an eviction issue at some point if things don't progress through the entire allotment, whether it's 270 days or 540. So something upfront to make sure that construction, especially on new homes. Because that was your whole purpose of doing this, 'cause you're building a new home, and you wanna live on that same property while it's happening. Let's coincide that right out of the gate.
And extensions don't have to be granted.
It's a little bit different.
Does the last sentence on that page, "Extensions should be tied to progress being made on the construction," speak to your sentiment that you're offering as well?
Which sentence?
The last sentence in number two says, "Extentions should be tied to progress being made on the construction."
Yeah, but I'm talking about before either of the two extensions, right out of the gate. Yeah, that's an appropriate line, yes.
Okay.
But even before that, I'm saying that construction needs to begin upon occupancy of the temporary housing.
Can you, just, Alex, I appreciate your hand, and we'll come to you next. Can you help, and maybe it's a both, but can you help summarize for me? Is your concern the total amount of time that there's temporary housing placed on the vacant land? And is that, if you feel strongly that six months is the absolute limit, and then they should go find an apartment, or move their camper to a campground, does it feel necessary to link that to the progress being made on the house? Or just the overall time, total number of extensions, total amount of time, that the temporary housing is there?
I just don't want the total amount of time possible to be abused by not starting immediately, and particularly on new housing.
Okay.
'Cause if you're gonna do new housing, you're making a big commitment. You're not trying to repair something that was in a fire or something. So, I don't wanna see this become a 540-day process where we're going through seasons, and then it's gonna be, "Oh, I got hardship. I couldn't get it done within the 540 days."
Thank you.
And we got some projects that may be happening. I can envision the Wiseman Farm being the situation, where those are gonna be all brand-new lots.
Thank you, Mr. Markcott.
And smaller than the normal lots that we have now in Lewiston.
Follow-up question for that. Is there any of the, in terms of any of the ordinances that you looked at? I think part of the concern that I'm getting out of Mr. Markcott is also relative to subdivisions, or the use of, so what I'm hearing from you is a concern with some subdivisions that are going up, and the ability to have a shanty town or multiple temporary homes relative to the building of a larger development, which I think might have a different community-wide perception than three lots placed over, you know, 20 miles away from each other. I don't know if that's accurate, but visual impact, that won't be so as significant as a camper on each lot in a subdivision that's building 12 homes. So is there any tying or restriction to subdivisions or developments separate from like individual homeownership in some of the examples that you looked at, or what you might propose?
I'm not sure if there's, the actual approval of the subdivision aside, building, you know, once approved, the subdivision would be treated as a, you know, buildable lot. And if it's separately purchased by someone who intends to treat it as an owner-occupied home, then theoretically, that ordinance, you know, as we are proposing, would be able to treat it the same way.
Is there any situation where the developer who owns 11 of the 12 lots, and only the first one is the model lot that's being built, could then have his family on 11 lots? Like, is there anything about intended final owner-occupant that would relate to this at all?
Well, the language as it is currently written for temporary housing for reconstruction, it emphasizes that it must be for someone who's building a single-family or two-family owner-occupied home. That's sort of all we have to go off of right now. But if, you know, there were more concern about placing stricter language into the ordinance, that's something we could look at.
I don't recall seeing anything that talked about subdivision in the community ordinances that I read. I can't speak for everybody else, but I don't recall seeing anything that dealt with that, but...
Thanks. Alex?
Yeah, I wanted to touch on making sure that we're sort of in alignment with how we're treating new, single-family houses with the ADU law that we just passed. So, you know, this is saying owner-occupied, single-family, two-family. But now, by right, you can make, I think, what, a single-family zoned, buildable lot? You can have up to four units on it? If I'm remembering this right?
It depends on where you are, but like the growth area of the lot, you could put four units.
Yeah, so I guess I would just wonder, you know, do we wanna have any alignment between what we're saying here and what is allowed for folks?
And if I might follow up on that?
Please.
Take that one step further. In a, can we just do the 2ADU, 'cause there's, it's a little more universal? So in a lot where a single-family homeowner has bought the lot, it's vacant, they're gonna put their RV on the lot, the house is contracted, you've issued the building permit, is there any potential or necessity for a second dwelling unit to be planned that would then allow for a second temporary home on the same lot?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, sure is.
Yeah.
Happy Monday, folks. But I think part of the concern that I hear surfaced from Mike is around the density.
Right.
As well as linking it to incentivizing progress.
I think that could be part of the ADUs. Now you get my head swimming.
Well, listen, Alex brought it up, and I think his desire for alignment, which I also would appreciate, I just really like consistent code, speaks to an opportunity to speak to density, which is what I was hearing you lift up as your, one of your primary concerns, is the visual impact of dense temporary housing that could be there for a year and a half. That's the nature of it.
It got more dense, hasn't it?
Well, it could potentially get twice as dense, and this is part of why I'm asking about developments as well. 'Cause I think the notion of somebody purchasing an acre in a more rural part of our city, and then being able to put temporary housing on it for a year, because I've never seen contractors bust out a new home in less than a year. I like the flexibility and the opportunity to not only be more equitable with cities comparable to us who are trying to attract those same homeowners, and to build and invest in a way that creates more of a tax base. Love all of that. And I don't think many people, housing is too expensive to allow people to both rent at current rental rates, assuming they could find a place, so that they can also build a home and the expenses that come with it. And I'd like to remove some of those barriers in a way that's thoughtful. So I appreciate this coming before the board. But what I hear is kind of the visual impact of temporary housing, and then the alignment that could have unintended consequences of potentially twice the density of just the single-family homes already. And so, just curious.
Well, I think, couldn't you make it
I mean, we could make it almost anything.
For the primary, for the principal resident only? So, if I'm hearing Alex right, they can put a temporary dwelling while they build their home. The home is built, and now they put another camper or temporary dwelling as they build their ADU. Is that what you're implying or saying?
That wasn't really where I was going with it. It was more that, you know, this is a tool for making it easier, more possible, more feasible for people to build housing. And if the goal overall is more units, which at least it is for me, you, you know, and someone says, "Okay, well, I'm gonna build, you know, one attached ADU and one detached ADU on the single-family lot, so I'm gonna have my primary structure attached and the detached." But, you know, the way this is written, that's a three-family house, you know, situation. So I can't park my camper there, I'm just gonna do two- So I can't park my camper there, I'm just going to do two units instead, so I can park the camper there, and then, you know, maybe I'll do the other ADU down, down the pike. I was more thinking about it from that perspective of just like, someone is building a structure on a single-family lot, and we allow for a variety of structures under, under code right now for that, but this would narrow it down to only certain types of structures. So just making sure that this matches what you're allowed to do. So, you know, if we are giving people the opportunity to live in temporary housing while they build their primary house, we should allow it for all the housing types that are available on the lot that they're building for. I personally don't think, I think the rule could just be one trailer for the lot and you just leave it at that, because I think the intention here is whoever's building it is building it for themselves, they're the primary resident. I mean, could you dream up a scheme of like, two friends are going in on building a house and one friend has a family, so they're going to have the primary house and the other friend's going to have the ADU, and they both want to live, sure, you could, but I think starting off with just a basic, one trailer, one lot, that's that, I think could take care of any density issues on lot. Also too, you know, making sure that people don't bring like two trailers, one for the kids, one for us, you know, leading to some of the visual impact that Michael's talking about. I think once you get outside of that, where it's like, okay, well, we don't want two trailers next to each other on two separate lots, in my mind, that starts to get into this question of like infringing upon the rights of the other people in the neighborhood. Like, I put my trailer here first, so now you can't have a trailer, or you can't do trailers here because you bought a lot in a subdivision, so like this isn't, you know, okay for you, you know, even if the subdivision means that, you know, the lots are huge and the visual impact wouldn't be there. I, I, I have a hard time thinking of a good mechanism for a limiting visual impact. And if it's truly temporary, which I think really is the tool here, is just like, you know, it's for a year, so like, don't live in your travel trailer while you're clearing the land, live in it once the foundation's been poured, you know, you, you need to time things out, that feels okay to me, you know?
I'd like to just parse those out, because I think there's a lot more discussion on the second point, but I would just like a straw poll for feedback, so the staff can finalize language for, for later review. Can we agree, it seemed like I saw lots of nodding, that whatever language is finalized, just a simple line that simply says, any parcel will have a maximum of one temporary housing unit at any given time, and that would kind of address any of the weird stuff that might come out with temporary on temporary for ADUs, just one at a time. Is there, can we just, folks okay with that? In the eventuality that we allow this at all, are folks okay with limiting it to one temporary per parcel at a time?
No.
Great. Can we hear from you, please?
In your, when you were reviewing this or putting this together, I assume you just went to other towns and cities that had similar language and just mimicked that language? Is that correct?
Bits, bits and pieces of it, part of the parcel, yes.
And then in conferences at planning and in code enforcement, in your discussions with other towns and cities, have they ever expressed any sort of issue with this type of setup where they're allowing it for new construction? Have you heard any stories of somebody, you know, the planning group in Bedford saying, oh yeah, we had that, boy, we really got a, you know, a shanty town for two years? And have you ever heard of any of that?
Not personally.
Okay.
I don't see why there would be that much of a risk personally, but.
Thanks. Others that we haven't heard from yet? Amy and then Penn?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that in the, in the actual ordinance itself, it says that you have to have electrical hookups and sanitary hookups, right, to the, to public water and to sewer? Is that accurate?
And you're talking about the current for, for those that are reconstructing their, their homes from damage, is that what you're referencing?
Right, it just said that the, the temporary, I'm, I'm trying to find it where, but, but the temperature, temporary structure has to hook up to electrical that's not a generator, it says, and then it's also got to connect to water, and I think it said sewer. So I'm only pointing out if it's new construction, then you don't have those things until you're, it's well underway, right, you don't have that infrastructure yet, yeah.
And that those are all implemented through a connection permit? I think you're in G.
Right.
Correct. I think that speaks to some of the concerns you had as well, Mr. Markott, in terms of the time, the ability to get the temporary housing place and what minimum activities towards construction needed to have progressed, as well as the connection permit? Thanks. Penn?
I would say, that was my concern around, excuse me, the habitability of the, the unit that would be on site, particularly sewer hookup was, I think, you know, my, my biggest concern, water and sewer, so that if that kind of conditions were part of it, that would make sense to me.
Yeah. Thanks. From a sanitary perspective, I agree, but a whole neighborhood of generators is also obnoxious, so glad to see, glad to see the electrical in there as well. Thanks. Yep, I just want to check to make sure there's anyone that we haven't heard from yet who wants to speak. Roger, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
I was just going to make a quick.
Oh, no, because we've also heard from you, and so I'm going to go to Mike first. Zoe, was there anything that you wanted to add?
Thanks for inviting me. I think the only, the only thing I would want to clarify with this sort of like one, one temporary dwelling unit per lot, would that be, if we're considering where it's possible to have two or up to four AUDs on a lot, could that be one at a time rather than like one ever?
I think that's, I think, what my suggestion was, well, it's one at a time, and it doesn't matter to me if it changes out each time, but I think what we heard from Mr. Connor as well as from Mr. Roy is that we don't, haven't heard any concerns previously, and that for you, that didn't necessitate any special language or attention.
No, exactly. I mean, I go off of experience, and if nobody else has experienced it, why would it, why would I consider it likely that it's going to hurt here? Especially in some of the size cities, Portland, Bedford, Bangor, I mean, if you haven't heard that, and the planning community is a pretty small community statewide.
I will point out, LD 2003 is pretty new, so this is a condition that's newer possibly to have the multiple units in places people haven't had that zoning before, but.
Thanks. Alex, it feels like you're just trying to point something out.
Just really quick, yeah, I didn't realize that was already in the proposed language, talking about one trailer on the property at a time, so you already all thought about it, so it kind of feels like my point was maybe moot, so.
Thanks. Mr. Markott?
To get back to what Alex just said, bringing my attention to the fact that already states that there'd be, shall not be more than one, that you have to have electrical supply other than a generator, and you have to have municipal, private water and sewer. I, I'd, it moves me away from the zero to a one, but I don't want more than one. And it's been little experiences, what I'm hearing, since LD 2003 is relatively new. The experience is very short, so can't, can't go on based on that, that we haven't heard any negatives. So this language in here, I guess I could migrate towards one per lot, even though I came into this meeting thinking zero.
Thank you. I feel like just in the comments that everyone has made, that there's also very clearly alignment that, yes, we do believe that this should be revisited and that it should include the language of new construction and not be restricted to a redo in any way, remodel, renovation or otherwise. I'm seeing nodding across. You don't need us to take these one by one, you're looking for us formally to act, to initiate, but I'm hoping that you're also getting feedback so that once you do, we can move to action at the next point. Do you feel like you have enough feedback on items one and two? Would you like further discussion on two in terms of timeframes?
I think so. We haven't talked about the number of days per se, so if there were any comments on the language, we wrote about 180 days and then possibly two extensions with justifiable cause.
I would feel, I'm going to offer my thoughts and then we can maybe do a quick go-around. I see some hands. I'd love to see the initial one be 60, 180 days or six months instead of 90, just with the time it takes for construction, I just think it's ridiculous and we'd be running out extensions like crazy. I, I would like to maybe see a shorter extension period, though. So maybe 100 days initially and then 90 or 120 for each extension, which I think gives a little more control on the timeframe there. Those are just my thoughts. I saw Mr. Markott's hand.
Procedurally, Shelley mentioned that we hadn't talked about, what was the term, timeframe?
Timeframe?
Yeah, well, they were like, you hadn't heard about a certain component of this.
Oh, the, the number of days for the initial temporary permit and then extensions.
And Shannon had listed three items initially, I got two of them down.
The first one is the new versus rebuild, and it sounds like there's some, some alignment, if not full consensus, on yes, we want to extend the opportunity.
And we've covered that, right?
Yep.
And the next one was?
We're talking about the timeframe, and you've already expressed that some of the timeframes that are recommended to move towards might feel too long for you. I named that 180 days for an initial permit felt right, given construction timelines and the fact that you're plugging into something by the time you put it on there, but that perhaps shorter extension periods made more sense, and that was just my input.
And, and I like where you're going with that. And the third item is what?
The next one we'll talk about once we talk about timeframes, but that's the standards of placement in all districts.
Location.
Mm-hmm, across the city. So other thoughts on timeframes from folks?
Yeah, I would assume that we have some information on when people pull, pull, pull permits to when they're issued a certificate of occupancy. And this is not like a, let's get the number based on that, but just like to sort of gut check whatever you have, that like, you know, maybe, you know, two-thirds of the average time that it takes to go from that to that is what we'll do as the initial term. Because I agree with Shannon, like, what's the point in having an extension if every applicant gets an extension? It seems a little ridiculous, you know, we want to have something. And like, you know, I think most, most people are going to want to get out of a trailer into their house.
They're spending a lot of money on a big house that they're moving into.
So, you know, if we can get something that's like around the length between those two time periods, you know, I think that could be a really nice starting place.
And as you look at data, there were just so many delays during the pandemic, and not only you have some weird anomalies in the data that like adjust accordingly or put an asterisk next to, but I would just name that it feels really important that this board or staff has the ability in extenuating circumstances to make adjustments. God forbid, we have a second pandemic of, of a similar nature. I can definitely see the opportunity where all housing is locked down, there is no place to go, and we're trying to make them pull a trailer off the land simply because they can't get their roof delivered from wherever. We saw that a lot, and I wouldn't want it to make the standard, just that there's kind of a relief valve, some mechanism that could be used in, in extremely extenuating circumstances, which is outside of the extension process, but.
We have good code officers who use their best judgment in those circumstances and work with those that work with us, basically.
Anyone we haven't heard from on timeframe that wants to chime in to give staff any direction?
I've got one thing.
Sure.
Going back to what Mr. Connor said, that the occupancy of a trailer is at the same time that the building permit, could we put a condition in there that it has to be construction of the unit instead of the building permit? Because somebody can get a building permit and then six months down the line, they decide to build a house.
Well, they, correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, Linda pointed it out too, so the, the building permits, they, they only have a certain amount of time to start. If they don't start within, is it six months? If they don't start within six months, that building permit is now void. Now, if they, if their building permit is, goes void, then by default, now that their, their, their temporary dwelling permit is tied to the building permit, that temporary dwelling permit is now going to be void as well, and they're going to have to remove the camper. So if they don't start within six months, they're void.
Yeah, but they're still getting to that situation where they can have the trailer on there day one, and six months down the line, or two days prior to the termination, they decide to start building. Now they've been living there for six months, basically.
Can I ask a clarifying question about that, just based on the discussion that we've already had? And I, I've not built new in Lewiston, so forgive me for not knowing, but from the time that I as an applicant, I buy the parcel first, I come to the city and say, maybe I checked to see if I can build on it before I bought it, but let's just say we cleared that, and then I ask you for a building permit, that's the first step that would allow me the opportunity to put in the septic and the electrical.
Correct.
So the requirement that temporary housing can't be placed on the lot until it is plugged into sanitary and electrical means that they would have already needed to have received the building permit and some time have gone by under the building permit to make progress in putting in those two systems to then, so, so the notion that a temporary housing occupancy permit and a trailer or RV could get parked on a parcel that has not yet started is structurally not going to happen based on the permitting process in general, because the requirement of putting in the septic system or whatever and the electrical system. So I think, I think the existing permit processes addresses the concern that you're naming, Roger, and I'd love staff to just tell me where I'm wrong.
I think you're right. The other thing is, a lot of, some of the communities, you know, we, we've gone with this language, some of the other communities have, have not had a requirement to hook up to electric and, you know, a subsurface wastewater or public septic, they just require that they have a plan. They present a plan, how are they, how are you going to dispose of your waste? We've, we've gone with the more strict language to make sure that they are connecting, and like you said, yes, the, the chance of them putting on a vacant land without a septic system is, is not authorized. And, and if they have the septic system, you know, they're going to start building fairly soon.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Markott?
So maybe the thought escaped me, but, so what I'm hearing is that putting in the municipal or private water and sewer and the electrical supply is tantamount to starting the building process.
Correct, yeah. So they can't do that without the building permit, and they have to have the building permit to get the temporary housing occupancy, but they can't even get.
So my concern earlier, actually wouldn't even be a concern because they've already started the building process to get the trailer in.
Correct.
Okay.
Based on item G. Yeah. Anyone we haven't heard from as it relates to timeframe? Anyone we have heard from that would like to go ahead?
I was just going to quickly add in that, like typically for water and sewer, like that stuff's going to run through the foundation, so like, there's going to be significant progress made on the site before there's something to hook up to there. So I think, yeah, any, any concern of, you know, someone like going through all of this effort and expense to like cheat the system and live on, live in a trailer for an extra three months might be pretty unlikely. And again, I think most people, once they've started constructing, they want to get out of the trailer, they're not going to want to stick in it.
I've known people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lived in trailers as long as they possibly can.
So I'd love to move us to number three, which is essentially, given that we find some language that we reach agreement on that does allow it for new builds and that we have some consensus on the amount of time and the total number of extensions, the question is, is there any place within the city of which we would want to restrict that, or is it universal to any place that housing could be built? And I'm curious about the, I'm curious to find out what you guys come up with later around single-family, multifamily, how that might relate to, to alignment with the language from the ADU, but let's just say where housing is being built. Is there any place that we would want to see that restricted or applied universally throughout the entire city? That's the essence of number three? Thoughts? Is that a?
I don't have any thoughts on it.
Okay.
I'm of the opinion that, yeah, if you can build housing, you should be allowed to do this. I think maybe we'd want to have some general rules, and maybe they're already included in here about, like, don't park the trailer right on the property line, you know, be a good neighbor type of stuff. But yeah, I think in general, yeah, if you can build a house there, why wouldn't you be able to place a trailer there while you're building your house?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Dee addresses a lot of locations.
Dee talks about.
Oh, yeah, ten from the property line.
Generally, yeah.
And five from each neighbor. I just, I guess have a question, where there, there would be no recourse that a property owner could take against the city if the parcel, so I think about like in-town city lots, right, like I have a little postage stamp-sized lot myself, and so if the amount of space that my construction crew would need to build my house, should it be an empty lot, and the very small camper van that would fit on my lot potentially around the space that the equipment and the foundation is being dug, and I'm clearly not allowed to park it on the street, and definitely not in front of my neighbor's house, so in the instance where just by sheer design of the parcel that I'm developing, I'm not able to. able to put my temporary home, there's no place where I can take action against the city because of something, something.
I'm going to defer to them, but I don't.
Like, we won't have to make accommodations for, we've found an additional.
Right.
Nearby vacant lot that you can put your, right, just checking.
Correct.
Because there will be places where that's literally not possible, just by, just out of reality.
Correct.
And that there is no recourse for, for homeowner for that.
I, I get it that, you know, we're, we're trying to enact this, but from the past precedents and past, you know, what we've seen, it's, it's not downtown. It's, it's the, it's the rural lots that people are buying.
Yeah.
Now, granted, once this, you know, if it comes to reality, we may see some of those, but that just has not been the past precedent.
Thank you. Amy?
I do just want to say, in terms of how the sequence goes for building homes and septic systems and things, the having to hook up to the septic system in order to be on the lot, that kind of goes against the whole idea of somebody's like stretching their budget, you know, they're, they're living there temporarily so that they can afford to build the house. Because I know when I built a camp, like, the septic system is, like, it's one thing to put it in, but then to get it activated and actually doing its thing, it takes a long time. So, for me, it was almost like the last thing that, that happened. So, I do, that feels a little restrictive to me.
Do, I would just ask, is there something that you would like to see instead of?
I mean, as, as far as the sewer or the sewage disposal, I would like to see a plan as opposed to an actual hookup, because I don't, I can't really even visualize how you're going to hook up your camper to a septic, you know what I mean? Is it realistic? That's my question.
I would second that, but I'd still like to see the electric hookup.
Electric, absolutely electric.
I think that's in, from a systems-wise contractor and installation, like, they're setting up temporary electrical so that they can use it to do the building, so I think that one's pretty low barrier.
Can I play devil's advocate?
Yeah.
If I were to own property and I brought a camper to it, and I had my own solar system or my own solar generator without gas, if, would that be allowed if you say it has to be hooked up to power, but I have, I'm planning to build an off-grid cabin without C M P?
Yeah.
Do I, if you put it in there as restrictive, it has to be hooked up, but I'm not planning to hook up, just playing devil's advocate?
To you, here's my devil's advocate, you have great staff who work with people who work with you, I think you said, and I would say, again, I think that, like, let's not design towards the bottom, but also I think if you have somebody who's putting in their entire plan, says we're not going to be on the grid, we don't have that in our, and that is approved, then I think you should also be able to amend the restrictions on the temporary housing to suit the end state. I think that's different than having a generator that runs all the time from the beginning.
Okay.
Good luck writing that in, but there's your devil's advocate. Thoughts from others? Mark likes it, it's a good non. Thanks. Bye.
I'm no fan of removing the sewer component, the electrical, yeah, if they're using some quiet alternative. Generators are not necessarily quiet, as far as neighbors are concerned, but as far as the sewer's concerned, a plan to do your business at work or somehow storing it and for later removal, no.
Carrying it out in buckets.
Well, that, that went through my mind. I'm just trying to find a way to.
Porta-potties get placed there for workers and in of themselves, and we're not like, oh, but there's a large square bucket of waste in the corner.
Oh, that's another topic for other businesses.
So, I, I, I do, have you, I, what I heard you say is that you looked at ordinances that did not include this, you chose the more restrictive one intentionally. Have you talked to folks who have implemented something restrictive like this to see how it comes up in reality with contractors and building sequences?
I didn't, but I'm going to.
And, and I just want to point out, this is the existing language for houses that have burned down, essentially.
Well, and in those scenarios, they already have a system they can tie into, right? And so, I think for a new build, Amy's raising some really good points, and I, I think if the point is to remove barriers and create more housing, more people who are purchasing housing and for housing to be built, that we should anticipate that that might be an issue, and we should check it with the people who install septic systems and connect them to houses, and just ask how that would actually look when the rubber hits the road. And for me, I, I think I would appreciate a plan, if not a full hookup, and, and I think Mr. Mercot's thoughts notwithstanding, the plan should address the frequency of removal, the storage, odor containment, and so I think naming what it is we're concerned about and structuring it that way is, I think, more important than saying, check this one specific box. That's my own. Do you sense? Amy?
And then I just want to, I just want to point out that one strategy might be that they're going to actually move the RV weekly to go someplace to get rid of their sewage. So, does this, if they had a permanent hookup, that, that wouldn't be an option for them? I guess my other question is, once you park your vehicle on the lot, do you have to stay there for the full? Like, does it have to be contiguous, or can it come and go?
I believe the ordinances that I've read was, it was, it was contiguous. It was, you have this much time, and at the end of that time, you can come and go, but your permit is for this finite amount of time.
So, yes, it could drive off the lot and come back up.
Yes.
Mr. Mercot?
And if both of these things are removed, then there's no construction started from day one of occupancy in the RV. Just, just to point out.
Does come full circle.
The argument that I was moving on earlier is now would be moved.
So, that gives you some input and some opportunity for follow-up. Is there anything that you'd like to ask us that might feel like lingering or unanswered for you so that you have the direction you need?
No, I think we're good at this point. Thank you.
Love that. Thanks.
Is, is the board interested in initiating that change tonight?
Yes, you'd like us to probably say some formal language.
I could make the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to make a motion to initiate code amendments summarized in this memo pursuant to Article 12, Section 4, and Article 17, Section 5.
Sarah, second.
Okay, Article 7, not 12.
Oh, Article 7's?
We have, oh, yep, you missed, pursuant to Article 7.
Oh, Article 7, sorry, Section 4 and Article 17.
Let the motion reflect, it looks exactly as that which was printed in the memo.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Linda, you're on your own. Yep, great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Can you call the roll? Roger?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Zoe?
Yes.
Thanks, motion passes. Good luck initiating. We're going to move to item C, the Planning Board Discussing Content for Drafting a Planned Unit Development Ordinance. Craig, this one says you. Great.
So, in February, we had a productive conversation, I think, on P U Ds. We got a lot of good input from you, and you also had some questions, some follow-up questions. And we'll start with the questions first. You had asked, well, you had asked for more examples from approved P U Ds from Auburn and from other towns. We provided those. There is a visual that we will go through in a little bit. The second question was the mechanism to require public transit for P U Ds. So, there was a discussion about how some municipalities would require or had the ability to require a P U D to allow public transit through and to their P U D. That was actually a misinterpretation from looking at the York ordinance. They, they allowed the board to require the access of the open space, so pedestrian access of the open space, not necessarily public transit access. That was a bit of a, a mistake. The third question was more, more comprehensive. So, do you wanted more specifics on the conceptual design review process that York has, and do other towns have the same requirement? So, we did look through York, Gorham, and I believe Auburn. I won't go through the whole thing, but I'll try to highlight it as best I can. York does have an open space subdivision ordinance. It's not exactly a planned unit development, but there was some helpful, helpful tips, helpful bits in that that we, that we mined. So, they have a requirement for a conceptual design review in which comes before the submission of a preliminary plan submission. The conceptual design review has to include an open, I'll find the specific terms for it.
Open space design and conservation themes?
Yes, yes, I believe so. And so, they have to, the long story short is that they have to design the open space before they design the, the rest of the subdivision. So, the open space comes first. They have that open space plan, and we'll have the visual for you as well. And they also provide at that same time a yield plan, which is basically, show us what can be built on the lot as it is using current, current standards before we do any sort of modification. So, they have to provide those two, two plans before getting any approval from the board to move forward with a preliminary subdivision plan. So, that's, that's how York does it. There are two very defined steps in which the open space gets planned, and then the subdivision itself gets planned. Gorham, moving on to Gorham, their process is, again, it's two-part, but it's, it's separate as well, and it's more closely resembles our contract zone, you know, process. So, they have to get a, basically a zoning amendment, and the specific term is in here somewhere, it's like a planned unit development zone, zoning amendment. They have to provide certain information, which again is, I want to find those specifics for you in here. The general plan, so they have to provide a general plan, shall include but is not limited to an environmental survey, delineation of required open space, roadway and utility plans, the number and type of residential units, the net lot area and proposed density bonuses, and a traffic analysis. The specific layout of the proposed structures or dwelling units is not necessarily required as part of this submittal, although the approval of the proposed density bonuses would be part of this P U D zoning designation approval. So, a lot of this general information gets reviewed first, and it gets approved as a zoning amendment, and then the applicant can move forward with a, a real application that goes just to the planning board. That's sort of how Gorham does it. And then we can move on to Auburn. And Auburn has a more flexible process than York and Gorham. We've had a few conversations with staff that are from Auburn, and from what they've described, it can be done in one, in one meeting. The density bonuses can be approved at the same time that they bring the application forward. They would, of course, recommend, and it may not be specifically written down, but they would recommend a pre-application meeting, but again, that can all be approved in, in one, in one meeting. Separately, Auburn does have a, they do a lot for the phasing of planning developments. So, basically, a master plan gets approved, once, by the planning board, once that plan gets approved, it's kept on file in, you know, in our department in, would be in the, in, in our, sorry, in our department, and once the applicant is ready to begin a phase, they would provide that plan, they would sort of declare that plan, and that would be reviewed for a final review by the Director of Planning and Code. And the whole purpose of that, I guess, is to save, to save money by the developer who's not paying, you know, property taxes on a piece of land that hasn't been built. So, there's some, you know, additional parts about that that Auburn has that York and Gorham don't. But anyway, those, that's sort of the processes of those three towns, and yeah, that was the, the main, the main question on the conceptual design review. Regarding the two, the other two questions about providing examples, so I think we have a presentation for you.
Great.
Uh, yeah, actually, I don't have, yeah, so you put up an offer.
As you get your presentation ready, what is it that you hope for from the planning board today?
So, input, we'd like to get your preferences. If you would prefer a two-step process, a one-step process with possibly a pre-application meeting with staff, would you, how much would the focus like to be on open space? Would you like to design the open space first? Is the open space important at all, or is, should the focuses, focus be on, on, on other issues? We've had discussions on the staff side. The Gorham's process in particular, with discussions with the Gorham staff, apparently they've never used that P U D ordinance. No applicant has ever used it because it's been too lengthy to go through. Go to the planning board, then go to city council for a zoning amendment, and then go back to the planning board. But again, we took some of the information from Gorham because it was useful in how they were focusing on some certain, you know, the density bonuses were, that they focused on was, was useful for us.
So, just to kind of dovetail on that, I think tonight, in addition to the presentation we've pulled together, we have a robust outline of what we're considering for you to look at for content. So, this is a workshop. You've already initiated the P U D changes. So, I think tonight, the hope is to identify, you know, if we're headed in the right direction, if there's any areas that you think were, we took feedback, we think, from the last meeting, but we may not have really hit it out of the park in some areas. So, if we're heading in, in the wrong direction, or if we're requiring something that you want to have be an incentive instead of a requirement, and so forth, it would be good to get that kind of feedback so that we can fine-tune language and work on, on, on actual ordinance language.
And for you, that's this guide?
That's that outline, yeah.
All 10 sections?
All 10 sections. So, that's also another point, if the board, you know, if we don't finish this workshop tonight, you know, if you need another workshop, you need another workshop, right? So, we'll just see where we are. And we did reach out to quite a few communities. We found limited P U D examples out there. So, while there are other communities with P U D ordinances, Brockland has one with affordable housing elements required as part of it, and no one has used that. They've had it for a year, but they also have expensive fees and things related to, I think it was sewer hookup, they were saying.
Sewer.
So, they think that that's the reason it hasn't been used. They've had people that have been interested. Bangor has a couple of examples, but their P U D ordinance is pretty basic. It just provides a, a small kind of increase in, in density and allows for development, you know, on, on single lots. Auburn has probably the most examples of a community that we've found. But also in talking to Auburn staff, one of the ways we could, as a city, get around some of the problems that people have had to development would be to allow more, like, essentially allow multiple structures on a lot. So, right now, where we've said one of the reasons the P U D would be useful would be to have, you be able to have, you know, 10 houses and all your friends live on the lot, and you have something in common that you do on the lot, we could just allow you to have 10 houses on a lot, you know what I mean? Like, there, there, some of the restrictions that we have in place, that would be an easy change we could make. So, that was a discussion with Auburn. That isn't to say that there's not elements in the P U D ordinance that we've drafted or other ordinances that might be totally beneficial to do, but there might also be some simple solutions to in the, in the discussion, so.
Can I ask one question related to that before we launch into it all? And this comes up from, from our last discussion as well, our, our last discussion this evening. I appreciate, and please continue, to reach out to peer communities. Do we ever reach out to developers or, in the example of septic systems, contractors to see about their input on why they're not doing it or what they do like about it? And I get that that might not be our target audience. I appreciate that our planning board is planning for the I appreciate that our planning board is planning for the future and not just profit or success of getting a development started. But I do think it would, you know, supplement, complement your input. Just curious.
Well, in this case, the PUD ordinance is something staff had on our work plan for a long time. It predates me. And we had a developer who reached out and said, you know, if I was in Auburn, I could do this. I want to do this in Lewiston, love it if you guys had the PUD ordinance that they had. So we've certainly had that feedback. Our intent, once we get feedback from you tonight, and we get a feel for the direction you're headed, is to have the Housing Committee and have a couple of other entities that do development in the area give us some feedback on this. So, but we didn't want to reach out to them and give them something that was just crazy ideas staff has that hasn't been vetted with the board.
Thanks, thanks, and good to hear about both. Go for it. Present away.
Are you presenting, or am I?
I love this, you could both sit up here.
Come on up here, Craig.
Support each other.
I'll run the mouse, you talk.
See, got a driver, we got a speaker, it's fantastic.
Oh, and I guess this works.
Does this one work? Well, we'll start with Auburn. So we've got Colonial Ridge, and this was originally approved as a residential R-PUD. One thing about, a side note about Auburn, they have several different types of PUDs, residential, residential rural, industrial, and I believe, commercial. So this was a residential PUD with eighty unit, single-family condos. It was, I won't go through the whole thing, but this was one of the projects that was approved in phases. So on the next page, you'll see, oh, I'm sorry, on page three, you'll see phase, oh, a phase from 2009, and then you'll see a phase from 2021. The first bit, you might recognize that's sort of a loop, and you'll also notice that same loop, just on a large map on the bottom there. So that was, you know, again, one of the benefits from Auburn, they can do the phasing. And the actual development itself, property consisted of two parcels, and let's see, some PUD characteristics adopted for this development included a homeowners association with bylaws, there was a community center, a common and open space, cohesive building design, phased construction, as well as a mixture of home styles. Auburn apparently did grant a twenty percent density bonus for this project. And it looks like they have been, again, they've been building in the stages, so they haven't completely finished it yet. So that was the Colonial Ridge. And we can go to Orchard Hill Estates. So Orchard Hill Estates in Bangor is located on a thirty-six acre parcel. The PUD is comprised of individual townhouse-style units. Characteristics of this development that make it a PUD included the common area, all land surrounding the units, the homeowners association and its elected board, and monthly fees for the cost of building maintenance, common area, and road maintenance and snow removal. We can jump to, back again to Auburn. For Mystique Way, this was actually an industrial-use PUD for warehouse spaces. Auburn requires a minimum five-acre lot for a PUD in industrial zones. PUD allows up to twenty percent density bonus, which is an increase in lot impervious surface coverage. So that's actually a great point with PUDs that are strictly commercial use, the density bonus, you can't give a net lot area for a density bonus for a commercial use. So in this case, it's the density bonus for the lot impervious surface coverage. So they had both those bases covered. The PUD also received flexibility in the road frontage in lot sizes.
I want to point out from discussion with Auburn staff that Lewiston has higher impervious surface ratios and lot coverage than Auburn does in a lot of our areas. So that benefit, the twenty percent increase, might not really be a benefit here. It kind of depends on what district someone was going to develop in, whether that would be, whether that would be a benefit that would be helpful to them.
Then we'll go to, go to Bar Harbor. Northeast Creek, so thirty-one home affordable neighborhood. Designed as two housing clusters with small lots to limit the development footprint to five point five acres, eight percent of the overall sixty-seven acre land. Project also included the acquisition of one hundred acres of ecologically sensitive land by Acadia National Park. The rest of the land was dedicated as open space, key emphasis for Bar Harbor's PUD ordinance. The Bar Harbor ordinance employs several incentives for developers for conservation and affordable housing, such as extra dwelling units for ten percent open space, access to public transportation, or double base development density in exchange for affordable housing. So that talks about some of those density bonuses that focus on things that are good for the community, more open space, more affordable housing, any other benefit that we can think of here.
Public transportation, just calling out your good work for Alex Sissink.
You'll see an image for the actual layout of it. You know, clustered in a small area with a large amount of open space preserved. And that was the intent of the PUD, in Bar Harbor at least. The development consists of two types of cluster housing with different parking arrangements. One allows residents to park closer to home, I guess that's in the purple. And then two walk-to homes, where houses are located along a pedestrian street with parking on either end, and I guess that's the blue shaded houses. And then we go to York. This is the example of the open space conservation subdivision. York's ordinance required the design and approval of the designated open space as part of a conceptual design review. And so you'll see here that on this plan, you won't see any lots, you won't see any houses or streets, it's just they just designed the open space first. And if you go to the next page, you'll see the yield plan. Oh, I'm sorry, that's not the yield plan, but that is the final subdivision plan. So they, again, they plan the open space, and then they plan the cluster in the remaining area.
Can you explain what a yield plan is again?
Yeah, so the yield plan, I apologize, I didn't show that visually. I thought it might be a little confusing. The yield plan essentially would take that image and would transpose as many lots as they could fit. So there would not be any open space on the yield plan. It would all just be, how many lots can we fit on this realistically? So that's what that would be, it wouldn't be just condensed into a small area.
It would look like a traditional subdivision where every part of the land is separated into a lot, there wouldn't be any common area or open space.
Okay. And what's the purpose of that? Just to see what the maximum is possibly?
Exactly, yeah.
Now, would that be on the green area as well?
Oh, yeah.
Green area?
Yeah, it would be the entire parcel, regardless of whether it was a steep slope or a wetland or anything like that, yeah.
Like what's the maximum yield they can get from it?
Can I?
That's, uh?
Was that the last of those ones? I have a quick question, I think, just as I make sense of it. Based on some of the difference between kind of like, some of the ones that you looked at were really around open space, and, which is awesome, and I think is an amenity, just to be clear, but some of our conversation had been about additional amenities, right? In addition to open space, whether that's shared common areas, physical structures, transportation, yada, yada, yada. I'm just curious, as I look at these different examples and where they come from, did you find, and I don't know if it's just anecdotal, but did you find that in many of these cases, a PUD was used as a mechanism to build in areas of conservation, not necessarily conserved land, or, and maybe both? Is it a mechanism that allows people to conserve lands through developing the land? So a lot of these are very large acreage, and I'm curious, is it like two hundred acres? And that's in a neighborhood conservation district, and we're like, we can manage to conserve a hundred and forty acres of the two hundred acres and just develop this little bit, and look, now there's new conserved land within our municipality? Or is it the reverse? There's a two hundred acre developable lot, and we're going to purchase it as a means to conserve it, and we're going to do that by building on it and creating this conservation area? Did you find that there was one motivation on another?
I wasn't able to find, I wasn't able to find much as far as intent of the developer.
Yeah.
I can say, looking through, and I might get, I might get it mixed up between one municipality or another, a few of them did require that the, a certain amount of space has to be designated open space, and that open space has to otherwise be buildable land. So you couldn't take, you couldn't just designate a wetland that you wouldn't build on anyway, and designate that as open space that you can then get some sort of bonus for. So it didn't, you know, there were precautions taken by different municipalities. I can't quite remember specifically which York might have been one of them, but there was consideration for that, as far as precautions on the town side.
What is the difference between a PUD and a subdivision regarding, looking at Colonial Ridge, for instance?
So, part of the difference is the process itself is meant to be more comprehensive. It's meant to be more of a, you know, allows more flexibility, but it also requires more, you know, more standards to be met as far as those density bonuses and as far as other standards are met. And beyond that, I mean, it really would vary from town to town. We've found that some PUD ordinance are much stricter, much more regimented. Like Gorm would be, again, York is not a PUD, but they do have a more strict regiment as well. You know, Auburn is more on the flexible side. They're more like a standard subdivision that has some flexibilities here, here and there, but the process might be more similar to a standard subdivision application.
To expand on what Craig just said, so for Auburn specifically, the main thing, the main reason that someone doing a subdivision would do a PUD is the twenty percent density bonus, which I think there's a fairly low bar for meeting the requirements of that. It has to be an element of like an attractive design, and, you know, there's different kind of thought processes that have to go into it, but it seems like it would be relatively easy for a developer to meet those standards. And then also, the planning board has the ability to provide some leniency on standards such as lot size, the frontage for a lot, potentially road standards. So there is some flexibility there that allows just some different options with laying things out, and that extra density makes it an attractive mechanism. Also, the requirement that you don't have to divide it all up. So an individual who doesn't want to have individual lots as their end game with the development, wouldn't have to with a PUD. That's another reason.
So financially, it'd be better deal, would it, PUD versus a subdivision?
Most likely, yeah. You could get the twenty percent density, so you could get a little bit more lots. If you wanted to, you know, you can offer different development product, if you will. So somebody could maintain ownership of it all and have it be rental, or, you know, there's some flexibility in Auburn, I think, for mixes of housing styles, you know, that might not be normally allowed. I can't, I don't know, I'm guessing now.
Another piece that we also discussed was the inclusion of mixed use. So a subdivision doesn't really make any allowances for anything other than strictly residential.
Yep.
And this could allow for both multifamily as well as single-family, little tiny home lot in the back and some townhouses, but then it also could have, and I'm sure this is buried in the large document, but it could have the like neighborhood cafe or some of that smaller commercial activity that we talked about when we were talking about the corridors and the business and mixed use of residential. So it allows a developer to plan a comprehensive community with different uses, different housing types, and different income sources that might also have a more comprehensive lived experience living there. Is that helpful, Roger?
Yeah.
It reminds me a lot of some of the things that I see in DC when I go visit a friend down there, where it all looks really old, but it's literally, there's the farmer's market spot was built in collaboration with the little cafes and the coffee shop, and then above them is housing, and then there's also little homes in the back. And all of it was able to be done that way because it was planned all at once and designed all at once, and they could save money by designing it all at once. That's what it's reminiscent for me. Questions?
And so by definition, a planned use development has a homeowners association, like full stop, right? You can't do it without that because nobody actually owns the parcel that their properties own?
Well, you could do.
You could subdivide everything. It is possible that you would subdivide everything and have individual lots for sale and not necessarily have common land. If we made requirements, so some towns have a requirement for open space, but like Auburn doesn't necessarily have a requirement for open space. So it kind of depends. So if we didn't require open space, and if you allowed, you know, it to be, so I mean, I think there's flexibility with how PUDs are structured, but.
And if there were no, some of the allowances of a PUD is to create a private road where a, you know, in lieu of a standard road, a standard road built to city standards. So if you do a private road, there would almost surely be a requirement that you have a road, you know, association, a private road association, and that would require exactly that, it would require not an HOA, but a road association.
I think an additional way to think about it is that this planning board, in the review process, whatever that ends up looking like, gets to hear the design and what the developer would like to do. And then we could say, given that you are going to have half of the properties, half of the larger space subdivided with owners that are owner-occupied, the parcels, and half is rental housing, we'd like to see a community advisory board or a homeowners association that brings those, like this board and its future participants would have the ability to weigh in on that without restricting or being overly restrictive. So it's kind of a yes and.
And I think it depends on who owns it. So if one entity is going to own the whole thing and lease spaces in a commercial PUD or rent spaces in a residential PUD, then there wouldn't be that. But if there are going to be individual owners, then probably it would end up needing an HOA of some kind.
So I would like to move us to this document, and I.
Sounds good.
I'm going to assume that the staff has done amazing work in a dense document that put these sequenced in this way, and so might we take it, one by one? Is that all right? And by that, I mean from the beginning, that there's no specific one we would jump to. So we'll start with section one, planned unit development's purpose. You've offered some information here, in some areas, you've named specific questions or areas of feedback. So within the content of section one, is there anything that you would like to highlight as an area of discussion, or variance as you did your research, or that you'd like us to start by focusing on? I'd like to find out how we can go through this document and give you the input we need without reading every word on this document. I'm just going to be really explicit about my desire to move us through this material. I'd like to afford as much conversation to the conversation points as necessary without reading through things that do not need conversation.
Yeah, so I feel like one A, items one through four are pretty standard, I would say. Five talks about promoting affordable housing. And six talks about promoting owner occupied, affordable or workforce housing. And those, we wanna get a read on whether that is part of the intent of this. We felt like that was discussion last time, but we weren't sure if it was consensus on the board.
And those are both, in the same way that we would assume one through four would sit. That's not in competition with each other, that both of those could be items that are incentivized through the purpose, right? Thoughts, concerns, or questions, excitement about five and six under A?
Would any of this mirror what Auburn is doing?
No, um, their density bonuses are not tied to affordability or ownership. They don't require a certain percent of their residential to be affordable or, um, ownership opportunities.
What would be more conducive to a contractor to do a PUD here versus Auburn?
It really depends on their goals. Auburn gives the 20% density bonus, like I said, with a fairly decent design of a project. Um, what we've crafted when we get further on, you'll see, is much more than a 20% density bonus is possible, depending upon, um, what they're providing. So, while there's some requirements in here for affordability or potentially for ownership opportunities, we provide greater incentives for density, possibly. Some, we're not proposing the same thing that Auburn has, so it's hard to compare.
Thanks. Others? Was that something, Alex?
I'm, I'm excited about number six.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, just considering that is a pathway for building wealth and also, you know, building permanence in a community. I think that's really kind of a nice thing to include.
Thanks. Amy and Zoe's nodding, I don't know if she has anything to add, but. Seconds to that. Amy, did you have something?
I did, just, so, of course, very excited about homeownership, it's kind of my deal. But, um, the, I just wanna say that the whole idea of permanent affordability, I'm hopeful that we can have owner, you know, owner occupied developments happen where there's not permanent affordability. Because what that actually does is limits the amount that people can actually, you know, build equity and participate in the uptick in the, in the housing market and build sort of long-term wealth. So, before, I would hate to see this baked in, that the actual like HUD definition of affordability and affordable for 30 years isn't the only kind of workforce or starter home housing that could be built. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
Maybe I'm wrong. Uh, so, 1A six, are there intended to be commas there? So, promoting owner occupied, comma, affordable, comma, or, or is it really just owner occupied, affordable?
Um, yeah, so, I think what we had intended here was that it would be owner occupied and it would either meet an affordability, um, threshold definition or a workforce housing threshold definition. But, if the board wants to see it differently, we're hoping so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, personally, I'm, you know, I, I get the incentive for affordability, but owner occupied really is, as far as I'm concerned, the overarching goal. So, even, even rich people like to live in PUDs.
Yeah. Yeah, for me, it's a, it's, for me, it's a both and. And I guess, under this, you know, final language notwithstanding, I think it's the ability, however you kind of structure your incentives, to incentivize a mix of these. So, like, my ideal PUD that would come in front of me would have owner occupancy, would also have affordable housing, both owner occupancy and potentially rental. Like, like, it truly would be, it's not the only thing and it wouldn't certainly be exclusive. But, I would hope that the incentives, part of what you're incentivizing is the, the mixing of both use, affordability, ownership. And I, I don't know that how that factors into your like bonus matrix. But, it's like a yes to all of these and double bonus if you knock a couple in to your design standards. Because I think that's part of what gets us excited, and, and for me, anyway, and, and broadly differentiates it from a subdivision. Like, that's why we're going through this in my mind, otherwise, here's another subdivision. Just move forward with that. Amy?
Yeah, and just one other thing. What, uh, I didn't see a definition of workforce housing, is there?
Yes, I believe the definition, um, the area median income. I wanna say it's in the 50 to 60% and up to 120% of area median income. So, it's somebody roughly making in the, for like 50 to 80,000, somewhere in that range. Um, so, it's.
Teachers.
E- exactly.
Yeah.
It's, it's the people that are just outside of the affordable, which is more of the poverty and, and just people making, families making an average income, which still makes it hard to afford the market rate.
But, is it, is it in here, the definition?
Um, it is not.
So, I would just request that we have a, an explicit definition of that.
Yep.
You know, to be honest, I'm not a big fan of limiting the income.
Of not limiting?
Yeah, no, I'm not a big fan of limiting the income or, you know, specifying, oh, well, we really want it to be workforce housing, which is limited up to 120% of median income. Why care how much the guy makes or the, the people make? In fact, I would, I would think that it would be more likely to be developed if you have those fewer restrictions on, you know.
I think it's tied, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the goal is to tie an incentive.
Right.
To including one of those elements, not restricting income.
No, I got that. And I, and I, when I was looking at the bonuses, you know, like the, you know, the 10% per 10% bonus for owner occupied, um.
When we do get further along, there are some requirements that staff have put in that we'll be looking for feedback on.
Yeah.
Right now, we're focusing on the purpose, so.
Yeah, I got it.
If, we could change, uh, six, so it's promoting owner occupied housing as well as affordable and workforce housing. So, it kind of incorporates all three of those elements, yeah.
I'd like to see that changed, that reflects the both and. Like, just, uh, for viewers at home supposedly, um, this is about affordability and not subsidy. Because oftentimes, in larger conversations, subsidized housing, as in housing authority owned subsidized payments, becomes the kind of assumption of what affordable housing means. And here, you're really talking about affordability being related to someone's earning income and eligibility.
Yeah, so, however the, um, developer wants to do things as far as, you know, whether they have subsidies or whatever, i- it's really about who is eligible to rent or buy that property. And it's based on that individual's income, whether they meet those income requirements or not.
Thank you. Other thoughts on six, 1A, six, and we didn't really talk about seven, but I feel like that has been expressed previously. So, five and six, 1A? Great. Did you have other items under purpose you wanted to lift up for us? And I would like to say, while I'm asking staff to direct where they would like feedback, because they spent a lot of time discussing these, at any point, any item that they don't call out, any member of the board should say, well, actually, I really like, want to talk about 1A1. Feel free, please, all of you to, to lift that up. But, I will continue to take staff direction without any suggestions from the board.
Yeah, uh, section one, purpose talks, uh, references a conceptual plan review, which we'll describe a little bit more in later sections. So, I think, just to keep that in your mind.
Can you help me with a letter and number reference there?
Uh, section one, D two.
And actually, it makes sense to talk about D one first. So, um, what we, what staff has put together, um, here is a requirement that, the, the applicant put together a description of the purpose of the PUD. And, and tell how it aligns with the city's purpose for the PUD ordinance. So, they develop a theme, which we're not telling them what it needs to be. But, the theme could be, um, you know, if they're focusing on, um, providing open space for habitat or for farming, you know, that could be their, their theme and allowing, uh, housing as well. Or, it could be to provide, uh, homeownership opportunities for workforce and market rate. And it could be a number of these purposes that they're hitting on. But, they need to explain why are, why are they coming in for a PUD? What's the intent behind it? Um, so that then, when you get to the density bonuses, we, you know, we can see what makes sense for density bonuses. Without that, you don't know why they're coming forward and what their intent is. And it's, it's hard to really understand what, what their ent- um, intent is. And so, then, the theme, which Craig mentioned in item two there, is part of that initial application. So, this process is a two-step process that we've outlined, um, where they would come in for a conceptual review. If there's gonna be open space, they've outlined where the open space is. They've told you what the reason or, or theme for the PUD is. Um, and then there's some basic information, like what types of density bonuses they're looking for.
We'll get to that stuff in the details in the process.
Yeah, yes, that's part of kind of the general.
I think D one and two, you did a great job describing the theme and its importance as it relates to purpose. Looks awesome. Any comments or questions on that, those two items? Feel good enough about purpose to move on to section two? Great. Eligibility.
So, we had discussed, uh, previously in February, um, what's the minimum standard for a PUD? There seemed to be general consensus about, you know, two acres or five proposed dwelling units, one or the other being met. We basically just went with that as a standard and wondering your input if that's consistent with what we had discussed in February.
Yeah, I don't, go ahead, Alex.
Oh, I was gonna say, I don't, I, I'd love to hear some reasons why we'd wanna have a minimum acreage for this. Like, in my mind, you could fit, you know, a really interesting pocket neighborhood type development into less than two acres. Um, you know, I think about like the lot that I live on, if you put, you know, four tiny houses on it, uh, or, you know, put two of those lots together, it'd still be less than a, I think it would still be less than an acre and you could still do something interesting there. So, I'm, I'm just curious if there's any issues, like, I guess, sort of to the spirit of like, this is a process for people to bring forward interesting ideas that will help increase housing in the city. Like, two, two acres, I think.
Housing, industrial and commercial potentially.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Or, you know, bring interesting things to the city, yeah. Like, if you say two acres, then it's like, well, it's not gonna happen downtown. It's not gonna happen in my neighborhood, probably, unless someone buys a bunch of lots and puts them all together. So, I, I don't, I would love to hear reasons why we need to have a minimum.
Yeah, so, the way we've written it, it's or. But, and I think the way we're envisioning it was like, if it's a commercial PUD, then you need the two acres. If it's residential, you need five or more units. Um, but, yeah, we're open to different ways to do that.
I appreciate the construct of or, which allows exactly what you're asking to happen because it has five dwelling units, so.
I mean, even, even for, like, because we might be talking commercial, we might be talking anything. I guess, in general, wholesale, what, what, what is, what is the good reason for having a minimum acreage?
Well, I mean, they're, they're suggesting that, well, if I only have three units, we don't want it on less than, and it's primarily commercial, we don't want it on less than two acres, is what they're saying, right? Or is that, is that, I understand that.
Yeah, you hit one or the other threshold, so the commercial would have to hit the two acres because your residential is.
I mean, me personally, I, I agree with you. I, I think there really shouldn't be any, uh, just prim- primarily because it sounds like in some neighborhood or some communities where they have PUDs, they really haven't had any takers. And it might be because of.
Yeah.
Some additional restrictions, as far as I'm concerned, make it as few restrictions as necessary. And so, I agree with you that just a minimum number of units, really.
Yeah, because, I mean, in my mind, that's sort of where this all comes down to, is sort of the aggregation of units, whether they're commercial or residential. You know, if, if I was gonna pick out of my head, like, oh, an example of interesting commercial on a small lot, the, um, I don't know what it's officially called, but it's like a shipping container strip mall on Washington Ave in Portland. Like, that, that is definitely less than an acre that it sits on. And it's an interesting project and there's five or six units there, commercial units. So, again, uh, I'd love to be told why two acres is a, a, a good minimum to have.
I just wanna reaffirm, it feels like maybe you didn't hear the part where it's not required to be two acres.
I understand that.
So, so, is your question also, and, and in the areas where it's less than two acres, is five not feel like it's the baseline for you? Because I'm hearing either or can be met. And I'm, I wanna make sure that you are hearing that. And so, you keep referring to two, but do you also mean the restriction of five?
I'm, I think I'm okay with the restriction of five. I think why I'm bringing this up, uh, like, if, if it's either or.
So, this would allow, I'm ju- I'm checking for my own understanding. This would allow for a PUD that proposes five units. I'm holding a question around commercial versus dwelling or mixed. But, five units on an acre or on a half acre or on a quarter acre, we, it would, that would cross the threshold for you to be eligible for us to review it.
Yeah, and the way we've written it, it's dwelling units. So, um, it probab- this, the way we've written it probably wouldn't work for the, um, commercial development that Alex just described in Portland.
Or, I, here's the converse of it. So, like, if, if we take it as an or, then it's like, then I could put three units on two and a half acres. Because that's, and like, that just kind of feels, like, five units feels like a good minimum. I don't, I still don't understand why, yeah, the size of the lot really should matter here. And, and I'm advocating for just striking it because I don't think it provides flexibility within the spirit of what we're trying to do.
So, you're advocating for a minimum number of units, period, with no.
And that's it.
Yeah, is there anyone who can't live with that?
I'm good.
I'm, I, I would be concerned if it was specifically dwelling units. I'd like, like, four dwelling units on a coffee shop would be, that's five, let's consider that.
Right, I, I'm with you, I would say, take out the acreage and just say, five units.
Commercial or dwelling.
And I, yeah, and I would just get back to that, because I think this came up a lot in our first conversation. Is it five units by footprint or occupancy? Because somebody could put a five-story and be like, did it? And I think the whole point was to have kind of texture to a lot and some relation between the units. And so, it might be five units by foundation or.
Separate units.
Yeah. Just for what that's worth, considerations. Based on our earlier conversation, I think that was an area that we had a lot of consensus around.
Okay, so, five proposed units, commercial or dwelling or a mix?
Yeah, five unattached units.
Yeah, because what you're envisioning is more of a village as opposed to, I just put in an apartment building.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, I think that is the point, is to not just put in a five-unit apartment building and be like, um, because I think that's, you know, that's what we're trying to, we're, we're trying to get a little beyond that, right? So.
How do we talk about the difference between like a townhome and an apartment? Because it's, like, like, there's, um, I forget what the technical term is, but like the shared wall. Like, uh, there's, there's a, there's a phrase for this.
Like the party wall.
Yeah, party wall, um.
It's a party wall.
Exactly, like we.
We're gonna adopt that as the rage wall here in Louisiana.
Must have a party wall.
Rage a wall, that's what we're, no, just kidding.
But, I'm wondering, like, with this particular one that's up there now in Auburn, it's interesting that it's the garages share a wall, right? Which I think is.
I think in the back, they probably don't. I think we're only seeing it from that perspective. But, I got money that there's like two kitchens that are connecting in the back.
Got it.
For what that's worth. Do you know what's called snub nose design? Because it looks like a pig's nose at the front of the house.
Snub nose party wall?
Yeah.
It's my new band name.
So, so, I hear some consensus on removing acres and proposing language around five total units and that somehow they're kind of separate. Good luck with definitions. Okay, I see a question on number three in section two, how to treat contract zones? Can a contract zone have a PUD?
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that we didn't not address this and then have it come up after we've adopted something. So, that was a placeholder and a question for the board, if you have any concerns about allowing it on contract zones, if the contract zone should be amended instead, or.
So, assuming that the general, that, that we reached consensus on the zones that are in number two, is this question really about outside of the zones, could we consider a contract zone that is a PUD? Or, or something that had previously been contract zoned? We're not looking at kind of.
So, the contract zoning stays in place until something got rezoned. So, so, the contract zone is essentially the zoning. And the PUD allows you to waive essentially all sorts of standards of the zoning. And so, are you okay with doing that? And so are you okay with doing that with a contract zone?
Yeah.
That's kind of the question.
Thoughts from others before I jump in? Zoe?
Just a question for the newbie, could someone please explain contract zoning?
Great, yeah, welcome to the team, doing good. Thanks for the reminder, it's been a minute. Felt like all of ours were contract zones for a while there, so yeah, it's been a minute.
So currently under the current ordinance, um, if somebody wants to rezone or do something different for use with their property, or if they want different standards, like greater height or different setbacks or something like that. Um, one of the options available to them is to actually draft new zoning for a specific parcel and essentially do a contract with the city to, to rezone it. As opposed to asking for a rezone to be, you know, any of our existing zoning districts. So oftentimes you'll see a contract zone that's written and says, the underlying zoning, or you know, the zoning uses of downtown residential apply, plus the additional use of something specific that they wanted. Um, or this, you know, a lot of the dimensional standards apply, except they can go to 50 feet high instead of 35 feet. Um, and sometimes it's more elaborate than that. Um, and there's a lot more detail based on the idiosyncrasies of, of what they're requesting. So it's really, um, zoning that's specific for a parcel and a specific use or intent that a, an owner has.
What I would add Zoe, which is going to give my own opinion away, but, um, contract zones are a little bit of a gamble for the developer because they have to do a lot of work and some upfront design work to bring forward a request. And at any point, we could say, no, fi- find the zone for that use or make your use conform to the zone that, of the parcel that you have bought. And so my opinion is like, yeah, let's consider it. Because if somebody is going through the effort, then maybe they can think of something we hadn't and we always get the right to say, no, that's not compelling enough for us to approve it. Or we can change or put in considerations in the contract that they might have not thought of or that we could put on them in terms of like, the berm needs to be higher, you need a limit, like, we're able to put that in. So there's a lot of authority for the board in those, and so I don't have any concern with hearing about it. Doesn't mean it'll get approved and that's the gamble the developer can make.
That particularly makes sense if you're talking about, um, PUDs in commercial, industrial and residential. You know, like, it just makes so much more sense in that way.
Amy, but I think Alex maybe, did you have a hand up before that and I ignored you, okay, so Amy?
So just, just to test this, so could Wedgwood have been a PUD?
I think it holds most of the principles.
They prob- they might have still needed some of the waivers that they asked for because some of the standards might not be flexible in the way the PUD is written.
The design standards specifically, like the glazing ones.
The design standards. So I guess that's another good question is, um, I would think you would still want the design standards to apply to the PUD, but would you want the ability to be flexible on the design standards in addition to the dimensional?
As we have already, specifically on glazing, on almost every project we've considered, under the design standards. I'd love to see that flexibility continue to be there.
But would you want to see it to be waivers like you would normally grant or just the ability for you to, you know, just?
It looks good.
Yeah. So something to think about, we maybe don't have to decide that.
I don't have to wait to think that. No, I think the design standards are a guide for a specific area of our community. And if you'd like to plan a PUD on a quarter acre lot with six units in, right in the middle of the design district, it still should apply for. And then you should ask for exceptions as so many developers have relative, that's my, that's my opinion.
And like functionally, it's sort of like the same thing. It's like either you show up with your PUD application, you're like, look, cool windows, it's only 30% instead of 50. Or you say, look, cool windows, can we have 30% instead? You know, it's just like how you formalize your requests. So I, I agree with Shannon, just like, use what we got, it seems to work okay. I mean, should we revisit the design standards? Sure, but like, the process, process works.
Post-PUD.
Yeah, process, process seems to work just fine.
Other questions from the board or things you'd like to raise in section two around eligibility? Staff, get what you need.
We did number two about locations, we didn't discuss, but if you.
You didn't have a written question mark or lift it up, but no one on the board has had a concern? And I'm hoping we don't revisit every number.
Okay.
So, and do you have a concern?
Nope.
Is anyone on the board? Okay. Section three permitted uses. Yeah. So, um, I don't see any question marks that jump off the page. Is there anything that you'd like to lift up or that maybe you had some extra discussion on that you want to make sure we are all on the same page with?
Um, number four, we do talk a little bit about the mix of residential and commercial when there's mixed use.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
You just said residential and commercial, and this language is residential and non-residential. And I'm curious about the inter- interaction of industrial. Cause I think we off, in the other conversations that we've had, we have often correlated co-uses of commercial. Um, and maybe even light industrial, I'm thinking like a maker space, a kiln, I don't know. But I, I think the language you've used here, residential and non-residential, is less specific than if we were talking about residential and commercial. And that kind of language might be really informative to how the board feels.
Yeah, actually, if we, if we go up a little bit here, you'll see. We don't contradict ourselves necessarily, but like, we say that there's commercial, residential and mixed use PUDs. And that you can, you do the underlying zoning uses. So if industrial isn't allowed use, you could do it. But then in three, we say you can also provide justification for co-locating things that aren't allowed uses, which would be the example of like, the light industrial and the residential, cause there's a relationship. So, yeah, I, I guess that's why we use non-residential.
So they're just basically saying, other than non, other than residential, right? That's the point?
It, I think it's a hundred percent the point, and I guess that's my fundamental question is like, is that the point as it relates to PUDs? Cause when we had the most, uh, most engaged board discussion around residential in close proximity or even on the same parcel in zoning for non-residential uses, it was almost exclusively for commercial. And so we have not, and maybe commercial and light industrial co-mingle, but I don't think we regularly talk about residential and light industrial. So I was just curious about the kind of Venn diagram of what we're thinking about for a planned unit development and how.
There was, um, so Alex pointed out a kind of maker space type place he had been, where people who are making or fabricating things in their workshop space also live onsite. So that was one example that we had in mind when we were drafting this, that, you know, if somebody made a good argument for why the uses go together and that it's a benefit to the residents to have that use onsite, um, that that's something that could be allowed. But it is a good point when we say above types of PUDs permit a commercial, residential and mixed use. I think we meant, those are just permitted. But if you make a case for it, then the, the light industrial or industrial might be allowed.
I've, I mean, for me, the whole endeavor is around allowing creative ideas to be heard and then yet also thoroughly vetted. And so I'm not for restricting it on the front end. I would just hope that our language makes it consistently clear that it is these uses and then it, could you, a number two use, like underlying, any underlying zoning use. So I just think being consistent with the language to convey both to us as we review it and then to those who are using it once it's approved, that we would, we would welcome a proposal that includes any of those uses. And here's the process by which we'll review it, but that does feel useful.
So I guess my follow-up, cause that's a good point, is, is the board interested in industrial being added to the bullet one there of types of PUDs? Like something that's industrial and that's all it is, there's no residential or other components?
And to a part that Mark just lifted up quietly is like, is it only light industrial?
So that's, that's I guess the question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like Mark had his hand up and I wanted to, you had a little.
Yeah, well, a couple of things, uh, so I personally, I think any use, so industrial use would be fine. If that's the point of the PUD, cause you could have industrial. I could see an industrial commune.
Specifically or like gender in aggregate?
Yeah, no, I could see.
Great.
Uh, but, uh, so, uh, I had a question about the, of the, the last sentence on number four. After we can finish this, I guess, or do you want me to?
Go, go ahead.
So, in the case where it is not preden- predominantly residential use, then the maximum is not applied of, uh, non-residential use, correct? So what is predominantly? Just more than 50%? Cause then what that means is, if the PUD is 51% non-residential use, then I don't have any.
Yeah.
So you, you just have like this weird gap of 20 to, between 20% and 50%, is that what I'm saying? Meaning if it's 40, if it's 48% residential, then I can't go beyond 20%.
I see, so I.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So the residential zone, okay. So I wasn't thinking about the number of units in the development when I was saying predominantly. I was thinking about our zoning districts. So if you kind of imagine rural agriculture, low-density residential, suburban residential, medium-density residential, NCA, those are predominantly residential. You start to get into the gray area when you get to NCB.
I did read it about the placement of the PUD in a district and the district is predominantly. I think it would be helpful, I think this is good enough for conversation, but I think that'd be helpful.
List the districts.
Yeah.
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 Uh, and then with that, so I'm fine with the 20%, but is there a, you know, a, an allowance for us to, in case it ends up being 22% for us to allow that? Or can we write that into it?
Like a waiver clause?
Right. You see, where, when it's going to be something slightly over, but otherwise it meets the general intent.
Yeah, I mean, they could come in with a 22% and the extra 2% is the farmer's market attached to the farmer and it busts over your commercial line and there's no.
Farmer's market ruining the neighborhood yet again.
Right? Such a shame they're shown to bring in value, increase property values. No, I think that's a great point. Uh, I think there was some action over here. Number four, otherwise under permitted uses?
Uh, I was just gonna sort of chime in and say, yeah, like, less, less, uh, formulaic stuff around what, what's allowed and what's not allowed, I think is really good. And definitely including industrial. I wonder, um, what, what are some things that are like, uh, cause we don't, we don't typically get a lot of applications, at least in my time on the board, for industrial usage. Like, the only one I can think of is, is the woodmill for the, for the guitar maker, for the luthier.
Yeah, so, I know, it's true, cause industrial, you're using raw materials to make something. So, um, it is gonna be, you know, the fabricating of something where it's not, um, an already made things that you're assembling. Or, you know, if you're roasting coffee, that's light industrial, the coffees already exist, right? But if you're, um, milling something, if you're welding, you're creating the widgets, that's all gonna be in, in industrial.
We should definitely include industrial then. I could imagine, you know, you have a little industrial park and like, there's a specialty woodmaker and then a bunch of furniture makers and the same thing, right? Like that, that feels like a, a mixture right there.
Yeah, and the furniture maker might be light industrial if they're taking the board and they're milling it.
Door.
That's right, yeah.
Or there's like, you know, the retail furniture store, the place where they make it and the mill.
Right.
For a couple of the business, you know, I don't know.
I'm for leaning into a developer who crosses all the other thresholds, including the financial proof, saying this is what I'd like to do and us being able to consider it on face value. And there's so many places we're already restrictive in our codes that like, this is the way to which, in my opinion, is the, what have we not thought about? And here's an avenue to help us think about it and a pathway to approving it. And so I'm, I'm for that pathway being unrestricted and truly inviting and the continued ability to monitor that process and the authority of the board to be like, no. Right, but I, I mean, I think that's number 10 is process, but I, just in terms of gentlemen. Awfully quiet to my left, and I hope it's not because I'm not looking over here. Now, if anything to add on?
We're doing good.
Okay, well, I'm gonna stream along to stand up, just kidding.
Sorry.
Yeah.
That maximum of 20%, I was thinking about it more, hypothetical thing. Cause it says by area, developed area, right? So it's all about footprint. So like hypothetical, you put in a neighborhood grocery store that is just under half the square footage of the developed area on the property, and then there's like six other units attached to it somehow, right? That wouldn't really fall under the sort of like 20% of the underlying use, you know, under, uh, it would be more than 20% of the area would be used by something that doesn't align with the underlying zoning. But like, might fit neighborhood character really well. So again, back to the sort of point of like.
So the agreement that we made that would like to see a waiver opportunity on that, but a standard set?
Okay, so, but sort of like.
Districts.
20% is probably what you should aim for, but think outside the box if you want to.
Well, I think, you know, to, I think in conjunction with the list that we don't see here, but if you're planning a PUD in a neighborhood conservation, whichever one's most restrictive, and 20% is the goal, and if you're gonna really be compelling, then go ahead and bring it, cause there's a waiver. But we want 20% to be the goal set in those cases when those districts that you're trying to place your PUD and are already predominantly residential. So not for any district, like that's the, does that make sense?
Yep.
Like, we'd want the waiver, but would want them to aim for 20% and explain the waiver. And you can bet the neighborhood would come out and say, yes, thank you for giving us a Trader Joe's. Or that's gonna create traffic and we don't want you to, and we will, the process will build in our opportunity to hear that.
Yeah.
That's right.
Right?
Yeah, could, could we have the language for, you know, the, the, you know, alternative process be sort of like, you know, non-conforming applications that still fit the neighborhood character? Or, you know, some, something that makes it really obvious when you read it that like, no, 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 this is a pathway for you. You know, if you have a good idea, don't be like, well, I don't really want to get the, the waiver, so.
I hope that was covered in purpose. And that's where their folks are starting from. Amy, did you have anything? I saw you, no, we're good?
I just don't know why, I, I don't know why we need to have all that language in number four at all.
Yeah.
It's just restricting, why are we restricting it?
I don't see any of this as language, but information to convey to us what their intent is before they propose language. Is that right, or is this?
No, I mean, number four with the 20%, 80% and that, like, all the, I, I don't understand why we need item number four.
Okay. Um, so in Auburn, in a residential district, you can have up to 5% of your residential PUD have commercial. So it's a pretty small amount.
That's small, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and we knew that the board probably wanted a larger amount. We also, if it's predominantly residential, I'm not sure any neighborhood's gonna want to see 50% commercial, 50% residential smacked next to them. It has to really provide a public benefit for it to be appropriate to go there. So we thought that some sort of guardrails on that for people to target was a good idea. If the board wants to be the guardrail, that's okay. But that, that was our, our feeling was for a developer to know whether this is a reasonable thing to consider. You know, if it just needs to be that they come for a pre-application meeting to you to determine if it's reasonable, then that's another path forward.
I, I, yeah, and I prefer guardrails to be stated enough so that they're investing their time in design and planning in a way that doesn't come in front of the board and say, well, we know we said anything, but no way can you put in an 80% base use that alters the, yeah. Section four, standards and requirements. Any area of concern, difference or excitement that the staff's trying to lift up for the board? While the board lets me know if there's something they'd like to focus on in the section?
For, for five, open space. When, I think, didn't we talk about, the last time we talked about this, sort of like, open space, but also amenities in general? So like, maybe there's gonna be a development where like, open space really isn't provided, but do we have anything that says?
Yeah, I mean, right after open space, it says, when approved as a theme for development. So a PUD could come forward and the theme is, we want to create as much housing as possible. We want it to be mixed, we've reserved very little for, for open space, and it could be not their theme. When they're saying, our goal is open space, à la York.
Yeah, oh, I guess I was saying like, uh, I don't know how you would make it a theme, but like, having.
Number one requires you to.
No, yes, no, I understand that.
Okay, sorry.
You can keep coming up with objections to the thing I haven't said yet. But, uh, what I'm wondering about is like, uh, you know. you know, we think of open space for, like, developments that are in more, you know, rural settings, you know, places that already have natural lands. Like, is there a, an equivalent that we could sort of have, like, if your theme is, like, an urban amenity, which isn't necessarily open space, I don't know, just brainstorming here. Could there be, just because so much of the city is pretty developed, and I'd love to see some of this happen in developed areas, like, I know we already have standards for amenities and things like that, like, is there a way to fold that in? Is this making sense, or am I just sort of babbling at this point?
Well, I think, I think, to me, it would make more sense if you said, I love number five, I'd like to see us add another standard or requirement that speaks to something different.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm-
Cause you don't have any concerns with open space.
Exactly.
Nor do you have concerns with a PUD being proposed, of which open space is not their theme.
That is a wonderful thing, yes.
So, you're looking for an addition thing to open space that speaks to a thing you're trying to articulate, which I've not yet honed in on?
Yeah.
But isn't, you don't actually have issue with open space?
I have no issue with open space.
Or it's reference to subsection eight, which I think is the intent that it's in there?
Nope.
So, is there an item?
I'll keep marinating on it.
Okay.
We'll see where we get with it.
I'll be here for it. Mark?
Eleven.
That was a fast hand.
Eleven. Uh, I personally wouldn't like to, I don't like the, when it's, the development is with residential uses, it should include a minimum of twenty percent dwelling units as affordable, or ten percent. Cause I can envision somebody saying, well, I wanna, I wanna PUD that, whatever, it's not gonna include that, but it is gonna be mostly residential units.
I second that, and the second sentence, I think, is closer to the language that I would like to see. Cause I'm for incentivizing. Uh, that sounds great. I think requiring is the standard.
Right, yeah.
And so, that first sentence is like, all must, and the second sentence is developments could propose a theme, back to like, open space being one theme, right? There's all these other themes, depending on the theme that you're proposing, but I, I don't like requiring it in all.
Agreed.
Cause you can always accomplish affordability through the density bonuses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you just strike the first sentence of eleven?
Well, yeah, and he, and he's, yeah.
Yeah, and none of this language is actual proposed language, I think it's just a, but, yeah, we don't agree with what the first sentence is conveying. Okay. In general, don't, don't restrict in that way, and incentivize the heck out of affordability at the same time.
Would that be similar for number twelve, which has a requirement, similar requirement?
Correct. Particularly, cause-
Yeah.
I mean, part of that also assumes that the residential uses that we're considering has a sale component. And if we're considering a PUD of which there is no intention for sale later, of the discussion we just had, then how are we gonna require a portion of it?
Well, I think this twelve is, is different in that it's really trying to get developers to sell, right?
Trying to provide some element of house ownership opportunity.
So that, so that you're not only getting developers who are gonna be creating rentals, which-
So, I hear that. What I'm saying is, I'm, again, in the same theme, I'd love to see that incentivized. I would be for fifteen percent being the threshold that incentivizes and receives a bonus. I don't wanna see a PUD restricted to having to provide sale.
Correct.
It's the opposite side of, like, well, let's not put him, it's just, it's both, right? So, and I do sense a theme in general around less restrictive and use incentives to, to get to where you want. There's a lot under four, so I'm gonna let the board, again, lift up anything that you want. I appreciate we've pointed out twelve, eleven, we've talked about an additional thing to model after number five. It's been posted. Parking is in here, y'all usually like to talk about that a bit. It's historically a hot topic for the board. Anyone need to focus in on seven? Doing good about what's proposed there? Questions for staff? Cause if they come back and we talk about parking, like, we didn't give them input this round, that's on us. So, we love what's being proposed for parking, great. Section six refers to a place that we haven't talked about yet, but I would say density standards, and nine has been a reoccurring theme tonight to you. So, we'll kinda hit back on that when we see section six. Okay, Phil, just, just, there's a thirteen and a fourteen. Don't get to page four, guys. Sir, whatever you had.
Thirteen, fourteen.
I'm just saying, if people haven't made it to page four, this section continues with items thirteen and fourteen. I wanna draw your attention to it. But that, you had your hand raised before you were looking at thirteen and fourteen, so.
Oh, I got one.
Where, you're talking about sections five and six?
Where, the whole thing is open for discussion, and actually, no, at this moment, no one's talking about anything. So, I'd love to hear what you'd like to discuss.
Well, if there's no section seven.
Oh, boy, you missed the seven?
No, there isn't.
That's a great point, thank you.
Oh, thank you, that is a good point.
Alex.
Somebody wanted to get to number ten on the last page.
I feel like we would've jumped ahead to section eight so quickly with a note of progress, sir.
So, uh, thirteen in section four.
Yep.
Um, set aside space for future road extension connection. Love to open that up to things other than just roads, you know, pathways, whatever, you know, thinking about like, the, the Riverside Trail and stuff like that. I don't know if that's included buried someplace else in here, but-
It is not.
Okay.
Road and transportation?
Road, connection, pathway, you know, figure out a good, you know, right-of-way for something, you know?
That's great. Last call on section four. Do we love section four, or are we at a point where you'd like to consider pausing and reviewing the rest in a second workshop? Cause I don't want y'all to just be asleep. Looking for consent, and we wanna keep moving.
Uh, I would say that we should pause and go for a second workshop, cause I agree with you. I think it's getting a little late in the night, and this is also a very dense document. So, I feel like I kinda have to, like, read it a couple of times over, can think about it. Um, I, I was gonna say that my, my partially baked thoughts are maybe like, a little more done now.
Let's hear it.
A little more firm, maybe still a little, you know, soft in the yoke.
But there's something else you wanna bring to the table?
Yeah, so, um, I was looking at, I was just like, trying to like, go like, okay, Alex, what are you, what, what, what are we thinking about here? And reading the section eight, open space requirements, um-
You're referencing section eight?
Yes, section eight.
Not number eight?
Uh, section eight.
Okay.
Yep, and, which is referenced in whatever section we were in before, that I was, had my badly thought-out comment for. This is very much written, open space requirements seem very much written for like, natural space, but I wonder about PUDs that could have like, a public square, like, or a fountain, or, um, you know, some, something that-
recreational.
Yeah, that's like more, uh, that is still common space, but it's not necessarily natural space. And, and that, that is, uh, common space, not just for the residents, but maybe for the community overall. Like, natural space would be not just for the residents, but for the community overall. So, thinking about how to incorporate that, and there is some stuff in there that is like, like, uh, I think there was talk about, yeah, like, activity area, or something like that, um, yeah.
I would lift up that that does reflect the theme of our earlier conversation around open space being an amenities, but amenities being the thing that we're incentivizing, of which open space could be one, if that makes sense.
There we go.
And I think what you're trying to get to, I think-
Yeah.
Is that in the, in the things that we're either requiring or incentivizing, which is what section four is all about in terms of standards, I do wonder if there is a standard around shared amenities, of which open space is considered to be an amenity, but it wouldn't have to be open space, cause it could be a commercial kitchen, or, right?
Yeah.
Um, and if that's what you're getting, is that?
Well, a little bit. So, like, you know, okay, so you look at section four, uh, number five, uh, open space, when approved as a theme for the development. So, the theme of the development is, uh, hypothetical here, we've put, you know, ten beautiful houses out on this wonderful piece of farmland, and we've kept eighty percent of the farmland undeveloped so that it can be enjoyed as farmland and natural space, and people can walk around it, right? What happens if you did something in town where it's like, okay, we're going to develop this space, and we're going to keep twenty percent of it, uh, like, publicly accessible square space, or, um, you know, soccer field's starting to get sort of in blurry lines, but like, you know, what happens if the theme is like, not preserving rural character, but preserving urban character? Uh, or building urban character? So, like, I'm gonna take one of the big lots down here, I'm gonna build a pocket neighborhood that has a couple of plazas in it, it's gonna have a fountain in one of the plaza, it's gonna have, you know, lights for nighttime activities, and, you know, something like that, or, um, it's a big open covered space that can be used for a farmer's market, like-
Yeah.
Just think, being a little more expansive with like, what common space can be, and having a theme that isn't just like, preserving untouched nature.
Yeah, I can totally see that for like, a commercial space, where you've got like, an arcade area, where there's lighting, and there's seating, and different businesses can use it, but people can come and go, and they, it's open to the public, it's not specific to a business, yeah.
There's some communities of which the theme is, um, breaking isolation. And so, you could imagine something with six dwelling units, and each dwelling unit has restrooms and bedrooms, but has zero living rooms, and has zero kitchens, and the shared amenities and the additional space that might fit that is the shared living spaces, of which is living rooms, and a movie viewing room, and a kitchen, and, and so, I, I would like, I appreciate all the open space, I think it's great there, and I would like to see us incentivize open space as well, but I, it would be great to see consideration of common spaces or common amenities. And either open space falls under that, or we're thinking of it as a separate bucket, and it's a both-and, but I, I do feel it's not articulated.
Like, theme, you know, the traditional theme that we're dealing with is humans enjoying the natural world, and I'm trying to think about how we could encapsulate, like, humans enjoying the human world, you know, finding joy in community.
Yes, please.
It almost seems like a, a structural issue in the construction of the, um, the, this zoning, whatever it is. This, um, in terms of, here's all the different kinds of purposes that it could be, and, and then what are the, what is, what does each purpose have to speak to? So, the difference between in-town, or, um, open space, or industrial, um, setting. So, how do, how does that spell out the criteria, um, in that kind of way? So, a different kind of structure, maybe.
That makes sense to you? You good?
It does, yeah. I think, um, when we dig into this a little deeper, maybe we get more feedback from the board on that, but I think staff's thought was, instead of prescribing, if you have this, you have to do that, but more of a, tell us what you're gonna do, but then there's these different incentives, and you can pick and choose. Let's say there's ten incentives, you can pick one of them, five of them, none of them. You know, maybe you don't want an incentive on density, you just wanna be able to do a road to a lesser standard, or something, and that's why you're doing a PUD. But, um, it, we had thought a little bit too, though, that you could have, if you're doing, if this is your theme, then you need to hit these, and so, I think you could structure it either way, so it's maybe food for thought.
I mean, maybe like, this is your theme, you should consider these. These things should be paramount.
Yeah, I mean, does it have to be either or, or maybe we have like, some certain, like, aspects of development that we do want to really encourage, you know, such as affordable housing? We could have like, certain gold standard categories that like, if you hit all these things, then you get like, an extra bonus. But otherwise, pick and choose, and you just get to add up the percentage bonuses as you add the things.
Thanks. Gentlemen?
I'm all for adjourned.
Great, I love that. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board, yes, uh, I'm gonna ask the board really clearly, take your yellow envelope, put the memo, the ordinance document, the affordable housing document. We know we're gonna get a different definition for workforce housing, the pretty PUD. Uh, all of those items back in your yellow envelope, and save them for our next discussion at a future date. Cause they're gonna tell us that sent them to us before, and then we'll wish we had. Okay, uh, so, we're gonna move on to agenda item D. The report out on a recent minimus change to a prior approved subdivision.
Yes, so, um, it was pretty straightforward, a lot in gender and business park is looking to be divided in half, you know, into two lots, um, so, that's something that the chair is gonna be signing tonight, and we're just letting you know that there's that minor change to a prior subdivision.
Yeah. We did it, it was small, there was good precedent for other times that we've done that, and it is minimus, and I did review it. Before signing documents. There's a reading of the minutes, we're looking for a motion to adopt the February tenth, twenty twenty-five draft minutes as they were provided to us today, which does reflect some edits from a previous conversation in the packet. Mr. Mark?
Before we move on to number six, I have some other business.
And the, okay, yes, go ahead.
Not sure if there are some missing items in here from other agendas, um, we don't have like, new and old business, do we?
No, we do not.
As far as topics, so, under other business, um, but, it's come to my understanding that Planet Fitness is moving into, uh, or nearby, not near Shaw's, the same building.
Planet Fitness.
Near Shaw's.
Like to welcome them to the city of Lewiston, um, good addition to the neighborhood, it's my neighborhood. Like to know what the city is doing, whether it's planning or economic development, or has a market basket. I, I think this, uh, community could, uh, benefit greatly with that sort of competition and that sort of business model. Well, we, we definitely need to, uh, work on that. And that covers both of my items.
And if you get into that, I would just like to say, what about Trader Joe's? Yeah, if we're gonna look at alternative models, I don't like to be exclusive to just market basket, that's all.
Just as long as we get an obinus.
Any, any follow-up for staff before we keep moving? Great. Any other, other business?
Oh, oh, I, I did, I don't have it written down here, but it just came to me, we kinda grinned earlier when we were talking about sewage. The, uh-
That's already my favorite sentence for the next minutes.
Try, try, trying to find the terminology for it, but, uh, all of the outhouses that, uh, have been built recently, well-
The public restrooms, I think you're describing.
Public restrooms, there we go, there, there's the phraseology.
The outhouses.
Public restrooms.
They're not outhouses, cause there's nothing to go out for.
At this point, uh, I guess I haven't followed closely enough, I don't know if that's grant money, uh, city, uh, city funds exclusively. I know that, uh, they're being shoveled out after every storm, know that they don't seem to be, uh, currently utilized all that much.
Oh, I see them utilized all the time.
You do.
Yes, and my partner works in the Sunnyside neighborhood, near the, um, Little Park and Cemetery, and the families that use that park, and Trails are really excited to have one down there.
So, um, I've been hearing some scuttlebutt, I don't know, um, whether it's misinformation or what, but, uh, is there an agreement, uh, for the, uh, removal of sewage, uh, from these, uh-
Yes, there is.
Public restrooms?
Yeah.
Yes, Public Works has a contract.
There's a contract, yeah.
Has a contract with an outside vendor. We're not using city, um, equipment. And, and it's not piped into the city sewage?
That's correct. Some of them have holding tanks, uh, subsurface tanks, and then some of them are just steel tanks on the, on the surface. Much like the one right out here.
And they're being properly maintained.
Sure, it's an uphill battle, just like using the porta-potties at a fair, but I've, I've seen and heard really positive things, and included when we, we approved that in the capital improvement plan two years ago, to see them be implemented in the last year, and there was a full-tied package with a one FTE that was responsible for routinely visiting and cleaning all of them throughout the, throughout the day, each day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so I'm still looking for a motion to adopt the February tenth, twenty twenty-five draft minutes, as they were presented to us today.
With the adjustments, with the yellow markers.
They are in there.
With the adjustments, as they were presented to us today.
Motion approved as, um, edited and presented to us at the beginning of the meeting.
Second.
Thanks. And a second from Alex. Any further discussion on the minutes? Call a roll. Roger?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Amy, yes. Alex?
Yes.
And Zoe?
Yes.
Okay, so, before we adjourn, which I'm sure someone will give you a motion for, we do have our next scheduled planning board meeting, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. we do have our next scheduled planning board meeting, April 14th, 2025. Folks are keeping their materials from today. I wish all of you, and particularly staff, drive home safe in the, in the snowy roads. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved, and we are, thank you.
There's a reason the seat comes with a title.
I'm of the opinion, that's what it says on the bottom, which means we're missing the first April meeting? Are we skipping a meeting?
You go over there, Craig.
Can you bring that back?
Just the way the month falls. February must really mess with us being all short and fast-moving.
It does that a lot, though.
Sure does, every year. Did you like this back? Should I ever need it again in the future? You should probably keep a copy on hand. I think it's very handy.
Oh, okay, yes. Sorry, thank you. I do have my own little thing. It just didn't make it really good.
Do I need to gavel at the end too? Does that matter?